One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as always, we'll read the mission statement of the Wakefield Public Schools. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. And with that, I will ask if there's anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight, and seeing none, we will go into our student advisory council.
Hello, everyone. So tomorrow, report cards come out. MCAS makeup testing also will take place this week. We have a half-day next Wednesday before the Thanksgiving break, which is Thursday and Friday. There's a pep rally next Wednesday night for football, cheerleading, dance team, and marching band seniors and their parents to be celebrated. The Fiddler on the Roof musical is taking place this weekend, Friday and Saturday at 7:30 p.m. and Sunday at 2:00 p.m. And the cross-country boys' team just won the state's competition with Matt Gretaerx coming in first, and they have All States this weekend. And the girls' swim team won the MIAA sportsmanship award.
Anything from the committee?
For the public sake, report cards are no longer printed, right? It's all online?
Nope, all online, all on iPass. Yep, those will be released tomorrow morning-ish.
And with that, we'll move into our consent agenda. We have a motion.
Move the school committee approve the minutes of October 24, 2017, school committee meeting, and accept the minutes of October 24, 2017, school committee labor and personnel subcommittee meeting as presented.
Second.
Alright, motion's been made in second. Did any discussion? Just a brief note that I'll be abstaining as I was absent from these meetings. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. One abstention. Budget items, Mr. Piffling.
Hi, good evening. Would we like to start with the motion on the first item for the job description, then we can maybe give a brief background on why this is needed?
Sure.
Move the school committee approve the IT Technician Level 2 Job Description as presented.
Second.
Alright, motion's made in second. Mr. Piffling.
So in your packet, you do have a proposed job description for a Level 2 Technology Support Specialist. This is not a new position, it's just a new job description. It's been about six years, five or six years since this job description was originally created. And the old job description had a lower salary, and this was before we went one-to-one, before we had Chromebooks, before teachers had laptops in every grade level. So the responsibility on this job is much higher than it was. In addition, the previous job description had made a lot of references to Windows 2000, Windows XP, Windows Vista. It didn't have any reference to Chromebook or teacher device support, had no references to Google Apps for Education. So we really felt it was necessary, where we had an opportunity to hire a new individual, that we create a job description that was more aligned with the actual position of the job. So that's my brief update. I'll take any specific questions you may have.
Mr. Callen.
Is this job currently filled, or are you looking to fill it?
This job is currently vacant, recently vacated.
And the...
It's a budgeted position. There's money in the budget for the position.
And, but it's a single, like, technically, I guess, you could hire multiple people on the same job description, but it's only one position we're talking about?
Currently, there is one budgeted position, but theoretically, yes, if the need proved it.
Okay.
Do you know what the salary range was on the previous job description?
It was $30,000. It just wasn't even a range, it was just a $30,000 number in there. And the budgeted salary this year, I want to say 62 or 63, off the top of my head, somewhere in that range, was the budgeted number for this year.
Mr. Markham.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to remind the committee that this is one of the items that was presented by the Labor and Personnel Subcommittee, was discussed at our subcommittee meeting, and the subcommittee recommends favorable action.
Someone come to town meeting.
Well, I didn't make a town meeting this year, so I thought we had to get it in.
Thank you. Mike, it's probably safe to say, I'm sure you've looked into it, this is pretty consistent with what another district would offer for this position?
I am trusting Mr. Weiner, who did the research, that it is. So I'm speaking on behalf of Mr. Weiner, that he did the research and compared other districts' job descriptions, and created one that met our needs, but stayed pretty similar to what other districts would write.
Okay.
So there is increased responsibility with this position? I mean, we're doubling the salary, so...
Well, I wouldn't say we're doubling the salary. I think we are staying within the budgeted amount, but we did... So I guess what we should say is, we have a salary range for all non-rep positions, and every year, we update that, and it comes before school committee, and the school committee does vote on these. We've now changed it to a hiring range. That hiring range was already updated, but the job description was not. So it's not that it's going up by 15 to some odd number higher than what it was. The hiring range that's been published every year was already brought up to somewhere in these ranges. I don't have the exact number, but it's not like we went from 30 to 45, just with this change.
Okay, so that's what it sounded like, from what you just said, that it was 30,000 before?
The job description when it was created six years ago was $30,000, but the hiring range is...
And then the hiring range changed in that time period?
Correct.
Thank you.
Good clarification, sorry about that.
If I may add, this sort of change to create a hiring range as opposed to a single number has evolved in the last half dozen years or so. And when there's an opportunity to create or revise a job description, it's usually something that we wanted to take on and then create a range for the position there by giving the hiring administrator the ability to hire within that range, as opposed to a plug figure. Often, job descriptions don't keep pace with the work that the jobs are being, that are doing. We went through this as a committee with the secretary jobs, and we had the study done and then sort of wholesale recreated new job descriptions and salary ranges, because they were not even remotely close to the last time job descriptions were updated.
Ms. Forley.
So is the salary range the hiring salary, or is that the entire salary?
This is the hiring salary range.
It is.
Correct. And maybe in the future, we need to consider taking salary range out of there, or hiring range, and just reference the non-rep, school committee approved, non-rep hiring ranges. And then we never have to worry about updating a job description just for the salary range, because we're already doing it for the hiring ranges. So I mean, it's something to consider, and maybe in labor, we can discuss that. Because as Mr. Markham said, even with the clerical ones, the ranges were several, probably 10-years-old, whom we had actually gotten to them, so...
Okay, motion has been made in second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Maybe we'll do the motion if the chair so chooses on the next one?
Move the school committee approve the Unit B Elementary Assistant Principal Contract as presented.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Piffling.
Thank you. Also, in our last labor meeting, Dr. Smith and I presented this side letter of agreement that we have worked out with the Unit B group, and this is for a school-year assistant principal position. And I can give you the details of the side letter, and Dr. Smith will talk more about the specifics of the why and the how. But this is a school-year position, with 184 school days, the same as the teachers, plus five days in August before the teachers come back, and five days in June or July after the teachers leave. We calculated this to be about 85% of the full-year Unit B contract position, and therefore based the salary ranges, or the salary grid, on 85%. Same number of steps, same number of columns, but it's an 85% of the full-year employee. We also covered 85% of some of the other benefits that were in the contract. We have run this past Unit B. They have given their approval on this. I do have signed documents from them. So if it is approved tonight, we can execute also here and after the meeting and be ready to move forward with this.
Anything from the committee? Mr. Markham.
Just want to add, this too was discussed by Labor and Personnel at some length at the subcommittee meeting, and the subcommittee recommends the support of this motion as well.
Mr. Callen.
So if I was currently employed in this position, how is this going to change what I do, or my pay scale, or what's the effect of this change?
So there was nobody in this position on July 1. We had two full-year assistant principal positions in the elementary schools, and both of those jobs vacated July, June 30th of last year. So it actually gave us the opportunity to rewrite this, and we were working with the Unit B group over the summer and into the fall to make this right, but we did get the people hired for the start of the year. We had the basis down of what we all wanted to accomplish. It was just penning it and making sure we had all our I's dotted, T's crossed, ran it through labor. So the people are already in the position, they're already getting paid at the salary scale. So this is really, I'd call it a formality, but if it doesn't get approved tonight, we've got some additional work to do with a couple of employees. And not that that should be a reason for anybody to vote for or against this.
So previously, an elementary assistant principal was a 12-month position, and we're making it a school-year position?
Correct, yes.
And then, but the middle school and high school are still 12-month positions?
Correct, as well as the two coordinators, or directors, I'm sorry, the two directors, the guidance department.
I thought that the elementary had always been school-year positions.
We tried to do that three or four years ago at the Dahlberg, with the first one, and did receive some pushback at that time from Unit B, but this time, they're fully supportive of this agreement.
I just didn't think that...
There was, we did hire one school-year a couple of years ago, a couple of years ago at the Dahlberg, and...
I was even thinking, a couple of the other schools, I thought that they already had been school-year people, but okay.
It's only effective at Woodville and the Dahlberg, also the Greenwood and the Walton have assistant to the principal, which is a stipend for a teaching position.
And I'm confusing assistant principal with school secretaries, too, so that's my bad. So, okay.
Anything else? Mr. Massey.
Is there any assistant principal for each elementary school?
So just for Dahlberg and for Woodville, the two large schools, and at the two smaller schools, Walton and Greenwood, is an assistant to the principal, which is a classroom teacher that has the responsibility, they get a stipend to step in for the principal if there's any kind of an issue at one of the small schools, and the principal's not there.
Has there always been assistant principals for Dahlberg and Woodville?
Then, has not always been. This is just in recent years, and, you know, it's something the committee's discussed at length, but it's really, it's been a really strong move for the Wakefield Public Schools in regard to special education, student services. It's a big part of the job, about half of the job. The other half is, you know, educator evaluation, you know, with the new evaluation standards. So it's been really helpful to have them. And, you know, the other thing that I feel really strongly about is it's a great way to develop bench strength, if you will. You know, for example, I think Mr. Laberty is doing just a tremendous job in his principal role at the Dahlberg School, and all of the experience that he garnered as an assistant principal really helped make his readiness to become a principal. And I think similarly, to have assistant principals working in that role, you're really developing, you know, future principals at the same time, which is great.
Okay. Alrighty, motion has been made in second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is business reports. So in your packet this week are the monthly business reports. These are through October 31st of 2017. I'll kind of cover the highlights. Salaries are staying in check for right now. I do want to just make you aware that the special education, or the aides category, not just special education, but aides, which could be kindergarten, library, or special education aides, that line seems to be growing tremendously fast at the negative margin, and there's a reason for that. We have not been officially awarded the 240 Special Education Grant. We have applied for it, but have not been awarded, and by law, we cannot start charging off salaries to a grant until we have the official award notification. So it's an entitlement grant, we know what the amount is, we know what we applied for, I'm not concerned in any way, shape, or form with this grant. So we should be okay with that, and once we get the grant awarded, we can adjust the people into the grant and right-size the line for the aides on the salary lines. Moving to the contracted services, you know, the big outlier here continues to be the special education tuition, the special education tuition line, as well as the pupil transportation line. We did finally get everything encumbered, I believe, on the transportation line, and we are starting our van service later this month, I believe, right after the Thanksgiving break. So we'll start transporting some students to the same collaborative, some of the local runs that were costing us more than what we could do it for ourselves. So we decided to, as part of last year's budget process, invest in three vans and some drivers. So that should be going into play, and that should readjust that line, that the things that we're putting in motion should readjust that transportation line. We'll have to do some more analysis, because we did get a little bit of a late start on that, but not overly concerned with contracted services, other than the special education tuition line. Supplies and materials, again, we think we have everything, not everything, we have the majority of things encumbered. We will continue to work on that. The line 16 instructional supplies, is that the right line? I believe it is. That's over, and the primary reason for that is that we have purchased all of the technology for this year. $230,000, I believe, worth of technology to, I have the number, I'm working on the lease right now, whatever the number is, but we're going to get the money back from the leasing company when they fund us for it, so that will bring that line back much onto the positive side. So there is some money in that line still, quite a bit of money. So we should be fine on the instructional supplies, but the instructional technology that we purchase every year, and then we convert it back into a lease, we get 2/3 of the money back, and 1/3 goes towards the lease. So we should be getting about $100, probably $50,000 back on that line. So I'm not concerned about that line. And that's about it that I have to report. That $112, again, that ending balance of $112,000, very deceiving because of the instructional technology and because of the special education aides that are in that grant.
There's got to be a lot of expenses that are not encumbered, though, because the unexpected stuff...
We're hoping it's not. We did ask people to encumber for unexpected. We didn't say, it wasn't only encumbered what you know you need, but anticipate that you're going to need some supplies, that you are going to need some maintenance. So, you know, Maria has encumbered some maintenance, I think, extraordinary maintenance. She's got $45,000 encumbered out of the $100,000, so that is not earmarked for anything at this time, at point in time. It's a nice, flat, even number of $45,000. So there is extra money encumbered for the unknowns. Not saying in every situation, in every line, I'm not saying that we have extra money in any of the salary lines, I wouldn't go that far at all. And certainly, you know, one school may have encumbered some extra money for some supplies, and one school may forget about something, I think it'll be pretty much a wash, it typically is. So I don't think there's any real big outliers, unless, I think the big outliers would come from special education, if we had an out-of-district placement, if we had to, possibly on the salary lines, if we had to hire another employee to provide services that a child is required by their IEP. So certainly, the salaries could go off by that, but I would really say that anything right now would be special education-related, or over time, if we really had a severe winter with snow and ice removal. I say that, I probably get jinxed. Yes, I'm sorry.
So the special ed tuition, if everything stays status quo, like what we have now, will that number change dramatically?
I believe that that number will change one way or another. Right now, we do have, when we get to the revolving accounts, there is, we carried forward $65,000 in circuit breaker, almost $66,000 in circuit breaker last year. Right now, we're anticipating about $120,000 in surplus circuit breaker. So if I have that in surplus circuit breaker, that $120,000, that will come across, again, against that salary line. So that 620 would come down to 500 even. You know, certainly, we're going to watch utilities like a hawk, as we do every year, but that is something that, fortunately, we've had a warm spell, and we didn't have an overly warm summer, overly hot summer. So you could tell from our utilities back on the first page that we are substantially under utilities right now, and that's not the heating fuel, that's the water, electric, and telephone. I do need to make sure that, I know the electric is encumbered, I just need to make sure that the water and the telephone are, but I believe they are, but the utilities right now are showing, we're showing a surplus, and that's because of the summer. We had a very successful, not too many 90-degree days in the district, so that's been a positive thing. So things like that, we'll adjust that number. Now, when I say eventually it will, the utilities, just say we ended the year with $100,000 surplus in utilities, late in June, the school committee will vote to transfer the line budget from utilities to special education. So that's when you'll see the adjustment come down at the end of the year. Unless we can really forecast earlier in May, but typically, the committee does adjustments once a year, possibly twice if there's something that carries into July. Typically, it's once a year.
But in terms of expenditures, I mean, what we know now, we're not anticipating additional expenditures for special education.
It's really hard to call. You know, you can always run into a 45-day placement, you can always run into somebody moving into district. If somebody moves into district and they're attending a collaborative program or a public school program, whether it's in Wakefield or not, we are from day one responsible for their tuition. If it's a private school placement, we have a year to budget for it. We have a budget process, a budget planning period that we have before we'd be responsible for. So if anybody comes in prior to, typically around April 1st, then we're aware of them, we have to budget for them in our next fiscal year. Anything after April 1st, the assumption is, is that we've already finalized our budget, and the sending district or the district that had the child before had already finalized their budget with the anticipation that the child was staying there. So it's kind of one of those things that they will continue to pay for the remainder of the next fiscal year, and then we would assume it after that. So private school, I'm not worried about it, but it would be the public school placements. A child who goes out on a 45-day placement, that is a quarter of a year, and on $40,000 or $50,000 tuition, that could be a $12,000 increase. And if you have two of those, they can add up. And it starts as a 45-day, and if they don't come back, now you talk about a 90-day placement or something. So I can't guarantee that that number's not going to change, but it certainly, it could stay solid.
Okay. Thank you.
So I can move on to grants. I don't have anything new to report on grants, we are still waiting on the 274 grant and the 298 grant. I believe I did see an award on the 262, but I did not get the paperwork on it yet, so I did not include it in this month's...
I have one question.
Yes, sir?
About the breakdown by building?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Did we skip that?
I mean, clearly, the shared district line is the sped problem. But why is posts, is that because we're waiting for money from Redding?
Yes. I wouldn't say waiting for money. We have, first invoice should be going out, we invoice three times a year.
No, I'm not saying that they didn't...
That would be offset by the rent.
I'm not saying that anybody's overdue, I'm just saying we haven't...
Yes, and I'll comment on that debt line, will typically stay negative all year. We do not deposit Redding's money back into there, because we don't want to show as, we want to show the true, actual yearly amount of money that was expended from that, so we can do a 50-50 cost here with Redding. If they send us $30,000, we put it in there, it goes exactly back against that line. It just makes it a little deceiving as to how much we actually spent in the post-academy for the year. Then at the end of the year, I work with the town accountant, and we do the transfers back after.
And then the Doyle, do we have, is that because we had to add the extra position there? I think we added an extra classroom over there this year, right?
I would probably say yes, and it probably just, it's a matter of maybe charging off the teacher and the parent, hadn't been done yet, because when we originally set the budgets and everything, everything was coming out of the local budget, so I may need to charge off another teacher and parent to the revolving account. So that's likely what that is. We're about a quarter of the way through the year, and that's about a quarter of what we should be over, so.
Okay.
I think we planned about $100,000 with that added classroom.
Okay.
Anything on grants? Great. Revolving accounts, everything checking out. Transportation is a negative right now, but we're still signing kids up for bus, so that's $1,600 bucks, $1,600, I'm sorry, $1,600 will be recouped very quickly, and we will be on a positive on that. The town takes the $112,000 right off the top. You'll see the expenditure is $114,450. $112,000 of that is the transfer to the town, it's in our budget at the beginning of the year. When we vote the budget at town meeting, there's an up-charge for the transportation offset. It's not really a revolving account, it's an offset account, but it shows up in our revolving numbers. And then the circuit breaker at the bottom, that is the $903,000 negative right now, but we are expecting $1.02 million from the state still, from our circuit breaker.
I guess my question's earlier, is a $311,000 difference from the same time last year? Is that payment just coming later than, or is it a posting question?
It was probably an encumbering issue.
Okay.
And we did carry $65,000 into the new year. So we got, I think last year, circuit breaker came in at about $1.2 million, so we probably spent about $1.125 million, $1.135 million out of circuit breaker. This year, we're getting $1.36 million in circuit breaker, quick math.
I'm just looking at, right now, we're at 903 in the negative, and last year, we were only at 589 in the negative, so I wonder why there's a difference.
It's a combination of we are getting more money in circuit breaker, we are charging off more tuitions to circuit breaker this year, and it could have been a timing, but I don't think so, because circuit breaker usually comes in September 30th, January 1st, or October 1st, January 1st, April 1st, and July 1st. They always come one day after the month ends, but we always backdate it with the town accountant to make it whole. So I don't think it was a timing issue on the deposit. Okay. I would really say it was an encumbering issue. Any other questions? Alright, maybe a motion on the payroll warrants?
Sure.
Move the school committee approve payroll warrants numbers 14 and 16 as presented.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
And we do not have any gifts this evening.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Piffling. Nothing from me, too, so, Dr. Smith, the floor is yours.
I'd like to invite Director of Facilities and Transportation Maria Suriel up to join us to present our FY '19 capital requests and priorities.
Hello, everyone. So it's that time of the year again, when we move forward presenting our capital requests for the Wakefield Public Schools for the fiscal year 2019. Once again, we've tiered the requests. Tier one, priority, being the most critical to the district moving forward, and tier two, still important, but less critical than tier one, and tier three, still very much needed, but not as impactful to teaching and learning as tier ones and twos. So I invite any questions, we can review the first tier. The process that we go through, we, working with all of the school principals, the directors, and the executive team, we identify priorities across the district and present them on a location basis. From that list, the list you have in front of you is culled from that, where we go through and place prioritization on the different requests, again, based on need and impact and cost. and cost to a certain degree. And so in front of you, tier one, the high school, the HVAC continues to be our number one priority across the district for the high school. Greenwood, one of the requests that Dr. Smith and I request and have been requesting for the past couple of years to advance our accessible playgrounds across the district, understanding that this impacts both our school communities as well as the local communities in which these schools reside. So Greenwood is requested there. Additionally, in Greenwood, and many of you are familiar with Greenwood, in the age of the building and the location of the restrooms, adding an additional single restroom on the first floor would really help many aspects of the life at Greenwood. Then we move to Doyle. Last year, we requested a sprinkler system, we once again make that request, understanding the importance that has on that school building. Additionally, so this is the year of restroom requests, the boys' bathroom, we're requesting be redesigned and the fixtures be replaced. They are not age-appropriate fixtures for that school population. Next up is athletics. Our baseball field really needs a backstop in netting. It impacts both the safety of our players and our spectators both, and impacts the tennis courts as well in back of there. For the district, we're requesting radio communications which support our fleet, we will be up to 12 fleet vehicles once all of our tires hit the road, and so being able to communicate is really a matter of safety for our students as well as our drivers. And then technology, and I should say that I'm representing both the facilities side and the technology requests for the district. Phones with outside calling capability, we're requesting those for both the Walton and the Greenwood, and the price breakdown is there for the technology side, and that, those really represent our tier one priorities.
Anything from the committee?
The boiler at the Doyle has never been replaced.
Correct.
Even, I know when we first opened that facility, the plan that I was told about, you weren't even here at the time, was that that boiler was going to be replaced like in year two. Now we're in year, what, four or five?
Probably four or five, probably five.
And, but it's not on the list.
So it is not on the list. It was actually approved for fiscal '15, so it remains on the to-do list. We work very closely with the DPW in collaborating what's moving forward, that is on the open list. The monies for that, though, are transferred every year, and so they remain still open and available for that project.
But I'm imagining that the amount of money from '15 versus what it's going to cost today might not be the same, so it has enough money been put aside?
That, I don't know, and again, that's held by, that's in the townwide budget versus the school budget to manage on the capital side. So it's certainly something that we continue to work with the DPW on.
Okay. And there's any hint as to when it's actually going to get done?
No, not at this time. But I remain vigilant about having the conversation. I know that both Rick Stinson and Chris Pierce are working on that project. I know, too, that Dr. Smith talks about that at her monthly chiefs meeting, so keeping the district's priorities on the table.
I just, I've seen the boiler over there. It makes me worry.
Ms. Leakos?
Thanks, Maria. We had the benefit of talking this through with you at the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee, so thank you for that. I think, and we talked about this, and I think maybe for the other committee members and the public, too, since the biggest ticket item is for the high school and the HVAC system, and we're renewing our, you know, statement of interest for the MSBA, for the high school, for redesign or rebuild of the high school, talk a little bit about how we prioritize needs, this one in particular, and the other capital needs at the high school now, as we go through that process and balancing out those considerations.
So once again, we applied for MSBA funding for a new Wakefield Memorial High School. We remain ever hopeful that we will be selected. Both Dr. Smith and I like to think of it as a question of when, not if, when we are selected. And the next milestone in that process will be mid-December, so we're hopeful for that. On the back page of the capital request, you'll see a section that's dedicated to accreditation funding and requests. Those represent everything that would be needed to bring the high school up to meet the accreditation warning status. So ever mindful of that, ever mindful of the fact that we have indeed applied for MSBA funding for a new school. There are still elements within the school that impact day-to-day life, and hopefully in December, we will be selected to move on. And even in being selected and moving on, we're still looking at a four, six-year process. So during that interim, it's our responsibility to everyone in the school, the students, the faculty, the staff, to keep it in a safe environment that is available and supportive of teaching and learning. And so certainly, HVAC is integral to the delivery of quality teaching and learning. And so that is why we've targeted the HVAC. You can't learn when you're hot or when you're cold on either end. And some of the rooms in this building, as opposed to some of our other schools, they're interior classrooms, interior spaces, that don't get any other ventilation, so it's critical that those systems work and work appropriately.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Ms. Morgan?
Maria, could you just talk a little bit about how the Greenwood School Playground was prioritized over the Woodville School Playground, where they both need accessible playgrounds now, and one's in tier one and one's in tier three?
Absolutely.
Could you just explain the process around that?
Absolutely. So it's our hope that we'll be able to deliver accessible playgrounds to each and every school across the district. The rationale for targeting Greenwood and prioritizing that as a tier one. So while the Woodville Playground definitely could use some accessible play structures, the playground itself is accessible, and so students can get out there and enjoy the fresh air, and there are a variety of gym toys and gym supports that can be brought out, balls and games, any number of accessories that make gym, you know, and wellness a focus. At the Greenwood, the platform there are wood chips, and making it really untenable for anyone in a wheelchair or even uneven footing to be able to really access those playground structures. And so the playground structures there as well are not handicap accessible, so it would be nice to be able to target that school and really breathe some life into that playground there.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
Okay. So I apologize, this is not on the motion sheet, but we do just need a motion to lay these on the table for two weeks for consideration at our next meeting, so I would just ask for that motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made in second, and anything else? All in favor?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, I hope that Maria could stay for another few moments and maybe Chris, talk a little bit about the Walton and give us an update on what's happening at the Walton renovation project.
All right. So last night was a major milestone in the Walton renovation project, in that the PBC voted and accepted a general contractor, so we're on our way. BC Construction out of North Reading was awarded the contract. The contract was forwarded to Tom Mullen today for work and getting it into the production. So we're very excited about that, and probably the best news is that the budget, everything came in on budget, actually below budget, and so we will be able to maintain the budget that was set for this project. And so I don't want to bury the headline, because that really is wonderful. But more importantly, I met with the Walton School, the teachers, the advisory group there, and they're so excited and so looking forward to the commencement of this project. So it's really meaningful, and so we are looking forward to that. We expect that the trailer, both the storage trailer and the front office trailer, will be delivered in the next week and a half or so, and we'll be on our way with phase one.
I guess the, I was, I never got too nervous, but some of the numbers we were seeing, there was concern that we could have been as much as a million dollars over budget, and then we were contemplating, well, what do you cut? To stay on budget, because we had no choice but to stay on budget, and it would have seemed a shame to go all this work in that building and then leave all the old parts without any AC, and not have the boils changed like they should be, and all those, the things that could have happened. But the way the bids came back, we're in great shape and we're very excited to be moving forward. It's hard to believe it's a week away before we start.
You can let them know about the committee that's in meeting at the Walton, right? I got to see you guys in action the other day.
So there is an advisory committee made up of the principal and three of the teachers, as well as the school secretary, who is the move coordinator extraordinaire, Sue Warden. And so we've been meeting, we bring in people as needed, and I'm excited to be spending every Tuesday afternoon at the Walton, and we'll do so throughout the project. But there is such commitment there and such excitement, and they understand that there's going to be some speed bumps along the way, but they're doing everything that they can to really absorb whatever disruption there becomes, because there will be some, for the students and the faculty and staff there, and so really looking forward to working with that group.
And the PBC has a small subgroup that's going, been meeting regularly, but we took a little bit of breather, waiting for the bids to come back. But we meet every other Thursday afternoon with members of the PBC and the contractors and the project manager and some representatives from the school, all getting together and just making sure we're working through logistics and just similar to what we did with the Galvin. And I'm on that subgroup that's on the Thursday meetings as well.
And now there is a website up live, right, to keep the community informed?
We just approved it last night, yeah.
So it was approved last night, so it has yet to go live, but it will, and I will email you all the link when it does. And it really is a great website. We didn't have anything really to update it with until last night's vote, and so it's being updated right now, so. And it really is great for the community as well, the Walton community as well as the local neighbors, so.
Actually, that was going to be my question, is how, or what structures do we have in place to continue the dialogue with the neighborhood? Because I know that was, you know, that set of conversations wasn't important when at the beginning of the process, too.
And it continues to be.
Yeah.
And so we'll do a variety of check-ins in combination with the PBC as well, and newsletters, and if we have to go to old-school flyers dropped in mailboxes, we'll do that as well. But we definitely have a commitment to communicating with our neighbors and the community as a whole.
And I think of a high priority for the group discussions has been, you know, making sure we don't let the parking situation over there get out of hand, and being mindful of, you know, this is still a neighborhood that people reside in, and we can't just take it over, and we're trying to make sure those logistics are first and foremost. I think that's the first topic of discussion with the contractor.
Thanks. Great.
Thank you very much, Maria. Appreciate you coming tonight. So the next agenda item for me is, I had mentioned to the committee that I wanted to edit or do a small revision to my goals. So in your packet, you have my goals that were approved, I believe it was in July, and will be due for my mid-cycle review in January. And I just highlighted in yellow the edits or the changes, and really, all it was, was just aligning the evidence and data to the new data dashboard that we're building, just that everything lines up together. So I just included in your packet, highlighted those spots, you could see what was changed, and just wanted to ask if you had any questions for me tonight.
All right, so maybe we'll start with a motion.
I move the school committee approve the updated superintendent's goals as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made in second, a discussion, any questions? Ms. Leakos?
So, Dr. Smith, I was thinking, you know, and I apologize for not bringing this up earlier, but I was thinking when I was looking at the redraft that you had sent us, which is excellent and really clear, but one thing that I thought was missing, and I wanted to ask you to consider, would be a goal centered around social and emotional learning. And I was thinking about our conversation around the youth risk behavior survey a few weeks ago, and some of the, you know, significant challenges that our district and many others are facing around youth risk, but related to social and emotional learning, I know that's a priority of yours and the district, and so I thought incorporating a goal in that area might be helpful in terms of our larger strategic goals, so.
And, you know, I always espouse to our principals and teachers in the district is that, you know, you write your goals very early on, and if things change, if new data comes forward, like the YRBS, or if new information comes, or if there's a compelling reason to change or tweak or edit, not to hesitate to do that. And so, you know, I would be more than happy to do that. I think the YRBS data was really compelling. The district leadership team met and reviewed the data together, and we actually spent an hour talking about what action steps we could do to address some of those pieces. So that's definitely something I could do. I think my suggestion would be a good place for that to go, might be under district goal number three, the, under the individualized student learning, because that's where it lives in our strategy.
Right.
The SEHL initiative and YRBS. And as I look at what I have here, this is distinctly related to my goals around building my professional practice school, around professional learning communities. So I could really make an edit there that I think could work. So if you guys give me another couple of weeks, I would, you know, maybe at our next meeting, I could maybe put something together.
Yeah, if the committee agrees, absolutely. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you. So a motion has been made in second, and all in favor? Passes unanimously, thank you.
All right, I will be back with another version in a couple of weeks, one more edit. But no, I think that's great. I think it's really compelling and really important. Okay, and then really, just under my other, I put one final piece in your packets that Kristin Morello let me know that the National School Lunch Program Administrative Review will occur this year in January of 2018, so I just wanted to inform the committee of that, so I put that documentation in your packet. And then finally, under my other, just a couple, since the last time we saw each other, a couple of presentations took place. One was our presentation at MAS-C, Tom and Doug Lyons and I presented together, they were both fantastic, and I wanted to thank Tom for participating, and I don't know, maybe Tom could comment on it, but I think the Wakefield presentation was pretty awesome. It went really well, we had a packed house, and I also, yes, we did two presentations. Tom and I did one with Dorothy Presser a little later in the day about superintendent evaluation, both were quite full. But during the Wakefield presentation in the morning, Acting Commissioner Jeff Wilson happened to come to ours and watch it, and I emailed you the, in his notes that went out to the state this month, he commented on our session, and, you know, I'm always, you know, not, never interested in seeing my name, but I'm always super excited to see Wakefield, so I was very, very proud of Wakefield. I don't know, Tom, any comments on that? It was pretty impactful.
Yes, it was. It was certainly a pleasure to join you at the forum. One of the things that I think was particularly interesting, if I may, you know, say so, was the audience members were really, seemed to be intrigued that the superintendent and the school community member were on the same page about some pretty important matters. In particular, something that has really, that Wakefield has been at the forefront of. I think that was actually compelling. I think that was compelling, some members of the audience came up and spoke about that. Even the commissioner, Acting Commissioner, you know, mentioned that when he came up and spoke to the three of us, that obviously, you know, his comments were, and others, that there must be a real partnership between the types of priorities the district sees, the type of work the committee expects, and the nice linkage with the synchronicity with the superintendent. So that was certainly what I think what we wanted to represent, although I don't think that was in our thinking when we were sort of preparing for it. Dr. Smith and Mr. Lyons and I met a couple of times going before we went down, and sort of to practice and get the slides right and all that stuff, but it was nice to actually hear. But it was nice to actually hear that, to have some feedback. I thought that was, that was particularly compelling. You know, everyone certainly usually says something nice. They say, oh, nice job. They say something complimentary at the end of a presentation, but some of the comments were, went sort of beyond just a typical compliment and really, really delved into some questions. We had people that asked for copies of the material, right, that sent us emails about looking for the handouts, looking for copies of the slides, so.
Dozens, actually dozens of emails have come in asking for our guide to student growth measures. Three more came in today. I've already answered dozens of them. So, I'm just, you know, sharing it out. And a number of those emails also will say, and we're also watching Learn Anywhere, we're really excited about Learn Anywhere. So, keep hearing about that, too. Yes, so that was, that was really wonderful. And then, this morning, I went out to Marlborough and presented Wakefield's strategy and core values to 25 new superintendents in Massachusetts. It was fantastic. It was great. Again, I'm always just, you know, just so happy to represent Wakefield, and it was really wonderful. It was about an hour-long presentation, just really talked about how we developed our core values, developed our strategy, some of the work we're doing, and then I just answered a lot of questions, and it was just really terrific. Just always makes me proud to represent Wakefield, so. So, that's it. That was this morning. And that is it for me, Mr. Terrell.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Oh, sorry, Chris.
I'm realizing with the phone issues, you didn't get my text earlier.
Oh, yes.
Back to this lunch review thing?
Oh, sure.
Do we have any control over which schools? It just seems odd to me that right when we're getting under construction at the Walton, they decided that's when they're going to, and we're going to be having the lunch in the classroom and all that. Is that going to be impacted by that at all?
No. I don't know if we have any control over that. We can certainly ask Kristin about that. I don't know, she talked to you about it?
Kristin and I just discussed, and she said it actually may work to our advantage, because we're satelliteing, it'll be brown bag lunches, so there'll be less to review on site. They will be eating in their classrooms. So, she said it may actually work to our advantage.
Okay. I just didn't know if we would catch criticism for a temporary condition, you know?
Certainly. I mean, they can't fault us for having construction. They can't fault the food service program for construction of a building, I'm sure, and that we don't have accessible to a working kitchen at the time because of construction. So, I think she feels like this could certainly work in our, to our advantage. But I can, I can understand your concern also, that, you know, are they going to say, you don't have a working kitchen, you failed?
Right. It just seems, of all schools to choose, why pick the one that's under construction?
Well, I don't think that they, I'm not sure that they knew it was under construction.
I'm guessing it's random. I don't know.
Yeah, I think so. You know, it's a finding. If it's a finding, it's a finding that will be easily rectified within the next cycle because we'll have a new kitchen and a new. Findings are not always a bad thing, is the way I look at it. It's a learning process. So, if they have a finding, because our kitchen was out of order, because we're under construction, I think that's a rectifiable one that we can quickly fix.
Thank you. Mike, I agree with you that often findings can be helpful. They set in pace corrective actions and set in pace creative energies. But just to follow up on Mr. Callanan's thought, my, my two cents is, if it's possible to change to another school, we may get more value out of the, out of the, out of the evaluation. We get more, get more value out of them coming in, because they're going to, they're going to evaluate the Walton School, which is going to be not only under construction, but whatever they come up with as concerns or assessment points will be of no value to us whatsoever because we'll have a whole new kitchen, a whole new process by the time, you know, next September rolls around.
I can certainly.
Whereas if we go to either the other three elementaries or Galvin or Middle School, we're going to get some, potentially some useful data, some more useful data.
Yeah. It actually says the following sites, and it does also list the Galvin Middle School. So, so, see?
I saw 60 Farm Street, but that's to visit with the director. I didn't know if it was the high school also.
Yeah, so, but it might be, you're right. But it might be interesting just to say, if it's possible, you may want to look at a different elementary school.
Yeah. I mean, my two cents would be to either the, you know, administration to advocate that they look at a different elementary school so we can get a better sense, a better value out of the, out of the review. And if you, you know, obviously going to, going even to Greenwood would get a better sense of a school without a kitchen and get that sense of things if we're, if we're looking for that. But if I could just hop off to Chris's point. If we want a value out of the state coming in, let's, let's not put them in a place that's going to be, yeah, temporary, that's, that even, even if they tell us 15 things to fix, you know, it's not going to be relevant come next September.
So, I will discuss with Kristin and just ask them to, ask Kristin at least to make a request to DESI to reevaluate their selections of locations, and that actually was a request to the school committee so we could get actual usable valuable data, that the data that we would get from the Walton would not be something that we could act upon in a year. So, I will, I'll make that request through Kristin to DESI, and hopefully, we'll, they'll pick the Woodville or the Dolbear instead, or the Greenwood, one of the other elementary schools.
Okay. Mike? All righty. Subcommittee reports. Mr. Callanan.
Finance hasn't met since our last meeting. We have a meeting, a joint meeting with FinCon tomorrow morning, just to update them as we had promised we would do on our current status early on in the year. So, we'll let you know how that goes.
Labor personnel, Mr. Markham.
We also have not had a meeting since our last school committee meeting, but we do have one set for December 12th, I believe. Don't quote me on the date. I apologize, I don't remember the date, but it's.
Might be the 13th.
Well, the 13th is a Wednesday.
Oh, the 12th. No, you're right. This is the 12th.
I believe it's the 12th.
Because on the night of the.
We're correct. We are. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Markham. Policy and planning, Ms. Fortier.
We just had a meeting right before this school committee meeting, and we'd like to have the school committee consider a change in the non-discrimination language in the school committee policy so that it reflects the current non-discrimination language that is now used in all of the handbooks and everywhere else. So, we thought it'd be safer or a good idea to just have the committee just vote on this or just give us permission to make that change. I'm not quite sure.
I think we need to place that policy change on the table for two weeks.
Place the policy change on the table? Okay.
So moved.
Okay.
Okay.
And basically, it's just to comply with a request from.
OCR and coordinated program review from DESI.
Okay. So, that will need to be updated then in the policy book as well?
Yeah.
So, we can get that distributed to the members before our next meeting, just for, just for review, so we can vote on it at the next meeting?
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor to lay it on the table? Unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I may ask a question of that prior topic?
Please.
So, OCR, when they, when they came in last year, are the policies, or the policy statement that is in the handbooks is compliant with OCR regs? But what's printed or what's published, I guess, in the school committee handbook is not?
The policy.
The policy.
The policy.
They're very subtle changes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, at the end of the day, I guess where I'm going is that the more, if we were to weigh what most of the public reads, it's going to be something that parents and students are reading in their handbook.
Exactly.
And that is, and so, we are in good stead with regard to our representations of what we, what we value to students and parents.
Correct.
And we're simply updating our own policy to comply with what the district has already. Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Future dates and agenda items. Our next meeting will be in two weeks, on the 28th of November.
Can you mention something about that?
Oh, please, absolutely.
So, at the next school committee meeting, Rob and I have already talked about it. My one agenda item for November 28th will be school improvement plans, and all the principals will be joining us. And Rob and I have talked about this year, doing what we're going to call a gallery walk, and we'll be live and active. We'll hold a preliminary meeting at 6:30 PM up in the principal's conference room, so we have plenty of room. We'll have all of the school improvement plans up around the walls. The principals will be there, and they'll have a full copy of all the action plans and outcomes and information so that school committee members can really kind of dig a little more deeply, interact with individual principals. I'm hoping you're really going to see the synergy between all of the plans and the district strategy this year, and we've done a ton of work on getting these school improvement plans to be really cohesive across the district. And that will give you a chance to really kind of interact with the plans and the principals at a kind of more deep level, and then, we will, you know, convene here at 7:30, and then they'll be here for kind of a Q and A as a full group for 10 or 15 minutes. I think that'll just help the, I think we both thought that'll help keep the agenda item, you know, really focused and coherent as well. So, anyway, that's, so I just wanted people to know, so we're 6:30 to 7:15 will be the gallery walk, and then 7:30 we'll be here on camera in the WCAT.
Sorry, at the high school.
High school principal's conference room. And we'll send this, Rob and I will send it to you in writing. But I just wanted to kind of forecast ahead, if you can try to keep your calendars open for that.
Open and free. Great. Thank you, Dr. Smith, for mentioning that. School committee comments. Mr. Massey.
I'm set, thank you.
Ms. Morgan.
I'm set, thank you.
Mr. Callanan.
I'm thinking.
Yeah. Mr. Leakos.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Dr. Smith for the great mid-year update presentation that she gave at Tom meeting, and to thank Steve Mayo and the Board of Selectmen for giving us the opportunity to do that. I just think it's, it's really important, I think, as an accountability measure and as an information measure to take the opportunity to let the taxpayers know where we stand and how we're accomplishing our goals, and so, I thought you did a great job, so I just want to mention that.
Ms. Fortier.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Markham.
I would certainly echo what Ms. Leakos said, and go Warriors, beat Melrose.
That's right. And I, too, am all set. So, with that, I'll just ask for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn the school committee meeting of November 14, 2017.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor? Thank you, everybody.